Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February workshop. I'm Chuck Pagano, the President. We will start off our agenda with a silent prayer. Commissioner Orso, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A special welcome to our two student commissioners, right here from Kennedy High School, Vivian Bunker and Reese Mucino. Welcome. Thank you for being here. All right, our first agenda item is Mr. Johnson's 20 minutes of stardom tonight. Welcome, and thank you for hosting us.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, welcome to Kennedy High School. It's a pleasure to have you in the building. And also, I will try to be brief. I know you have plenty of business to take care of this evening. When it comes time for one of these presentations before the Board, I always struggle to think, what would be useful for the Board? And we are in the middle of our NEASC accreditation process, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. I know Crosby just had a collaborative visit, and then Willby has theirs coming up. So it's sort of timely, and I can give the Board an update of where we stand. There have been some changes to the accreditation process. The previous process involved decennial visits, visits that took place every 10 years, 1989, 1999, 2009, and we were scheduled for a decennial visit in 2019. And a new process was developed by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, where there would be two visits, what they call a collaborative visit, and then the regular decennial visit. And so the visits were slightly smaller in terms of the size of the visiting team that would come for the visit. We had our collaborative visit in October of 2018, and then we are set to have our decennial visit next October 2020. And so this is the new process. You'd get these two visits roughly two years apart every 10 years. This is the new process that NEASC has developed. So with our collaborative visit, what NEASC does is they come and they take a look at our school according to their five standards of accreditation. These are new standards involving learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support, and learning resources. These standards have changed over the years. These are the very latest. The idea behind having the two visits, with the collaborative visit, the visiting team could come in, give us some ideas of what we are doing well. Those are called commendations, and some areas for improvement called recommendations. And then, over the time period in between the two visits, we'll work to make some improvements, put a plan together, and then they'll come visit us again in the fall for the decennial visit. And again, at the end of that visit, they will, again, offer us a report with some commendations and some recommendations. And the idea is, at the end of this process, we'll have some recommendations that they'll expect us to continue working on to improve our school. It's really meant to drive a process of continual improvement. We might even be expected to send in a report two years after our decennial visit outlining, what steps are we taking to improve in regards to those recommendations, or what plans we have for improvements going throughout the years spanning to the next decennial visit, or collaborative visit and decennial visit. So I thought I'd highlight some of the commendations that we received, as well as some of the recommendations that we're continuing to work on from the collaborative visit last fall. We were commended for the inclusive culture at our school and the numerous student organizations that helped to ensure equity and honor diversity. They commended the inclusive leadership in formal and informal collaboration to improve student learning. Teachers' efforts toward meeting all the needs of every student in every course at all levels of instruction. The inclusive, open enrollment process for students who elect to enroll in advanced course offerings. The development and implementation of a school improvement plan, which reflects the school's core values. The school-wide organizational practices in place that are designed to meet the learning needs of each student. Student, family, community, and business partnerships, particularly partnerships with institutions of higher education. We're also commended for the library information services that support student learning and allow students to work in collaborative groups, and services that meet students' personal, social, emotional, academic, and career and college planning needs. We are also commended for our protocols and our procedures that are in place to ensure staff and student safety and effective responses to crisis situations. I believe that's actually a commendation that we should share with everyone throughout the district. We've put in so much time into having our plans ready for, you know, all types of crisis situations, whether it be your traditional fire drill, to your lockdown drill, to, you know, any sort of situation that would be put in place. In addition, from the collaborative visit, we also had some recommendations, and these are things that we're continuing to work on. Here's where the recommendations were. Ensure that student progress on learning expectations are communicated to students and parents. While we might have school-wide rubrics that we use to grade student work and those sorts of things, they wanted to ensure that we are communicating those expectations very clearly, not only to students, but also to their families and to the community, and also to kind of come up with a way that we can kind of communicate how the school is doing as a whole on those things. So that is something that we're currently working on that came out of the collaborative visit. Ensure learners regularly engage in inquiry, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking skills in all courses and all levels of instruction. This is really getting to the rigor that we're offering in our classes. Again, something that we're going to continue to work on. Ensure that all students are afforded opportunities to demonstrate their learning through a variety of assessment strategies, including formative assessment, and have multiple opportunities to demonstrate their learning, receive corrective feedback, and use this feedback in meaningful ways. So again, are we looking for multiple ways for students to assess students so that students can demonstrate that they've learned what we are hoping that they will learn? And then, what is the quality of the feedback that we're providing students so that they can use that feedback in order to improve? Ensure that professional development days are coordinated and planned in a manner that is informed by the articulated needs of teachers. So as we see there is a need, are we providing professional development to meet that need to drive improvements in instruction? Include the library-media specialist in curriculum design and collaborative lesson planning to help provide a more robust integration of information technology and student learning. See, the idea of having our library-media specialist meet with teachers during their collaborative planning time, those sorts of things, so we can integrate what's going on in the classroom with the resources that are being provided in the library. Ensure that the library-media center is open before and after school, the idea of making it available to students who need to use it for whatever reason, whether it be working on a project, making a photocopy, getting ready for school. Ensure that all students use technology across all curricular areas to support and enhance and demonstrate their learning. And then engage in long-range financial planning to address the technological and instructional resources necessary for student success. So those were the recommendations that came out of our collaborative visit. And those are the things that we've been working on for the past year, because we received the report from the collaborative visit about this time last year. And those are the things that we'll continue to work on leading up to the visit in October. And when that visit comes around in October, late October of next fall, there will be a portion where the visiting team would want to meet with students, staff members, the administrative team, members of the Board of Education, and central office staff. They like to interview a wide range of stakeholders throughout the community, parents, business leaders, and they take all of this information and funnel it into a report that then we'll use for the next 10 years to drive our improvement efforts. So I just thought that it might be useful to run through that kind of information, because we're in the middle of it right now. Crosby just had their collaborative visit, they're going to be doing the same exact stuff that we're doing, and then Willby has their collaborative visit coming up very shortly also.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Juanita.
So they gave you a commendation on the inclusive, open enrollment process for students who elect to enroll in advanced course offerings. I know a while back, some students were saying that they didn't have an opportunity to enroll in certain advanced studies that you had here at Kennedy, so I'm assuming that you've changed that in order for you to get a commendation?
Yes. Well, I don't know how far back you're speaking of, Commissioner, but I can tell you that for as long as I can remember now, the policy in terms of enrolling in advanced placement, early college experience courses with the University of Connecticut, any of the courses that we have through North Dakota Valley Community College, they are considered open enrollment. So any student can enroll in those courses. You do not have to be part of a special program. You know, obviously, if it's a math course like Calculus AP, you have to have certain math courses as prerequisites to take the calculus. But it is available to all students. And in fact, what we have been doing over the past several years is that we use data from students' PSAT scores, okay? It's a report that's issued by the College Board called AP Potential. And it takes a look at how students did on the PSAT, and it actually directs us to certain AP courses that, given their scores on the PSAT, these students might find success in. So we use that to actively go out and recruit those students who, hey, listen, I don't know if you ever thought of it, but you took the PSATs last year, and given your scores on the PSAT, it's indicated that you might have some success taking AP Psychology. And so we might be able to grab a student that otherwise wasn't thinking in that direction, and they might take an AP course.
And this was going back last year, so that's why I asked the question.
We've had open enrollment for as long as I've been here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions, Commissioner Brown?
Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for having us. In terms of the NEASC accreditation, does it also identify the physical plant? My understanding that sometimes they identify you need improvements in this, the science lab, or the library, I mean, is that part of the NEASC this time?
Yes, it can be. It appears to be, having gone on a visit myself, and having had several of my own staff members go on visits to other schools, that seems to be slightly de-emphasized as much as it was, say, 10 to 20 years ago, where that might have been a larger portion of the report. Facilities, upgrades in terms of facilities, or capital improvements, can still be recommended in a NEASC report, but I think we're seeing just a little bit less of that going on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you. Got here just in time.
Exactly.
Good. I know there's your robotics program, one of our first, if not the first, I think, has had some turnover in volunteers this year, longtime volunteers. So how's that program going, you know, with the teacher advisor, et cetera?
It's moving right along. Matter of fact, the advisor just checked in with me a couple of days ago. Things seem to be proceeding with, they're in the middle of the build season right now.
Right. Okay, good. You know, because I stay in touch with that. I haven't been over yet to visit, but I just want to keep an eye on it, because there were some longtime volunteers I know that are no longer involved, so, okay, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Great story. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
I look at the commendations, and then when I look at the recommendations, I see somebody had to give you something to justify their involvement from the NEASC side of the equation.
Well, I think you're being kind, Commissioner Pagano, but those recommendations are all real things that we need to work on also.
Good. Just a quick understanding, how much time did you have to invest for this ROI outcome, you and your staff and the school in general?
NEASC, sort of, you know, in terms of addressing recommendations that NEASC have put forth from their report, it's something that sort of never goes away throughout the 10 years. It's not that you do NEASC stuff and then it goes away.
Okay. So it's constant?
It's meant to continually drive what you're doing to make sure that you're improving as a school. In terms of when these visits come up, yes, the activity does ramp up, and so it does take a significant amount of meeting time. The entire staff is divided up into various committees. Everyone is on a committee. It started off where everyone would be on a committee around one of these standards in preparation for it. Now, in response to how we're preparing for the next visit, it's more of, okay, these are the areas we want to improve on, and that's how we've designated our committees moving forward.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the Board, congratulations. This is a great story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here and for this presentation. Also, to add to what I know that you have done here at Kennedy is that NEASC is also now aligned with Portrait of a Graduate. So the work that you have done and your staff here at Kennedy aligned, because as I was coming in, I was able to hear that same language being spoken from both the accreditation agent, as well as the work that you were doing here, and then what the Board has already done. So there is an alignment there that maybe in the past didn't always exist. And also, if you'd like to recognize any members of your staff who are here this evening, we would like to see them and thank them for being here.
Oh, sure. I think I have quite a few of my staff members. Listen, everyone, would you please stand up or step to the forward, step forward here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And, Doctor, thank you also for the comment about vision of the graduate. It is something that I had meant to say and had forgotten. Our previous set of our school's mission statement, core values, and beliefs, it did not include a vision statement. And it was not required to have, I mean, it did not include a portrait of a graduate. And it was not required to. That was not part of the NEASC standards, like Dr. Ruffin said. But with the new standards, it is. And so that is one of the things we shifted as we were going through the collaborative visit last year, and as the district was actually proceeding with the development of its Portrait of a Graduate.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you again for the invite up here. It's wonderful. Our next item is public speaking. If anyone would like to address the Board, please feel free to do so. Just raise your hand and let us know if you're interested. I don't think anybody's interested, or they're bashful tonight, one or the other, but thank you. Our next item is the Committee on Finance, a request for approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Secondary Supplemental Enhancement Grant. Mr. Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I've come before you to apply for a grant for up to $50,000 that would help sustain a new course that would be in our manufacturing, construction, and industrial systems cluster that would allow for students to learn about drone and drone technology. This grant would help supplement not only the drones, but also the professional learning and the curriculum involved with that course. There are no matching funds, but we do need your approval.
Any questions, anyone? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Memory may be failing me, but in one of the previous bigger Perkins, did we already have some drone technologies?
We do have some drone technology. I think what this course would do is allow it for all four high schools. I don't think it was offered in all four. And when I say all four, I mean Kennedy, Crosby, Willby, and Career Academy. And so we had some drone technology as parts and pieces of different curriculum. This would be one course that specifically uses drone technology to teach about through transportation and engineering, and it would be a whole course built around drone technology.
Okay, because I think my memory is similar to what you're saying. It seemed more piecemeal, like we got a bunch of stuff, we didn't necessarily know what to do with it.
It was to supplement certain courses, but it wasn't built around drone technology.
So this grant and the coursework around it can stand on its own, but also implement all the other stuff?
Yeah, it's under a bigger picture of aerospace and transportation.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Any other questions? I'm sure the drone technology in general is turning over every year for improvements, and now it's going through a regulatory body of the FAA and the FCC to get much more tighter controls over anyone else. So I guess the message also is we're going to be continually investing in this as a function of going forward.
I think so, and I know there's been some recent articles about drone technology and what countries it's coming from, and what certain countries may or may not be able to access when you use video. And so we'll be looking at that as well when we work with a specific company.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Committee on Finance, the request for approval of Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with Access Rehab Centers LLC for speech and language therapy sections. Ms. Catherine Gabrielson, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. We currently have had, since the beginning of the school year, three vacancies for speech and language pathologists that we were trying to hire directly as Board employees. As of December 20th, we have a fourth vacancy that has yet to be filled. And we also are currently experiencing two maternity leaves and a long-term medical leave for speech and language pathologists. We have had postings up all year long. Unfortunately, this is a shortage area nationally, and it's very difficult to find qualified speech-language pathologists in Connecticut specifically to fill these vacancies. So we are asking not to increase the number of speech pathologists that we have in district, but to reallocate from direct hire to the use of contracted speech pathologists that Access Rehab has access to, no pun intended, to help provide to us to meet the needs of our students.
Any questions? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. There's something even predating Dr. Ruffin that I've always asked personnel, and that is a critical needs list. And I know this has been on it informally, because we never really established one. What do we need to do to really highlight this? I know we just met with our state reps a couple of weeks ago. I think we need to bring something to our state reps to say, this is also a field, right? We go after certain different things, and they get the headlines, but anything with special ed, that we have this need area on a nationwide basis, is what you're telling us, I think we need to put a little spotlight on this.
I would agree. I think it also comes down to what a speech pathologist can make financially on the private sector versus the public sector. And in a contracted agency, they can make more per hour than they can directly hired by the public school system.
Well, it may be a good financial decision for us to do it this way. However, just a spotlight to have a bigger population out there that we can draw from, I think we need to put a little spotlight on this.
I would agree.
I may contact you and see what we can do about this, because until you complain, right, the squeaky wheel, so maybe we need to look at this closer.
I'd be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else for questions? So the supply curve is in higher desire, I mean, the demand curve is in higher desire than the supply. Is that a pretty nationwide issue, or is it just sort of regional to here?
From what I understand from my colleagues across the country, it is national. I will say that this is the third district in Connecticut that I've been an administrator in, and it is one of the hardest positions to fill when vacant.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
So I recall from way too many years ago, when a friend of mine was looking at college and wanted to go into a career in speech pathology. And in Connecticut at that time, it required six years of schooling compared to almost every other state in the nation where it's a four-year degree. So she could go to Florida, she could go for four years, get her degree, but she couldn't teach back here in Connecticut. So is that still the situation? Because if that is still the situation, that's an issue as well that depletes our supply chain.
So I really can't speak to other states universities. I'm not familiar with their requirements. ASHA, which is the National Accreditation Group organization that provides the Certificate of Clinical Competence, has national requirements for educational training for speech pathologists, all of which require a master's level degree at some level. Their master's degree programs extend beyond the number of credits in a traditional two-year master's program. So that may be what you're hearing about. Somebody who graduates with a four-year bachelor's degree cannot practice as a speech-language pathologist. You have to go for more to get that clinical certificate of clinical competence.
Any other questions? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Mr. President. You had mentioned the kind of the differential between private sector, public sector. In very round terms, what, you know, what could two candidates of equal competency in education and track record hold in the private sector as an annual salary versus what a public sector might person be?
Can I get back to you with the numbers that I'm confident of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Significant enough, though, where most people are going private sector.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
How's lady for the bus?
Thank you. Catherine, is there any students that are currently not getting any services due to the shortages?
We are doing our best to be very creative to meet the needs of all students in Waterbury Public Schools. I'm on public session. We're doing our best to meet everybody's needs.
Okay, that's crucial.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Have a good night. Item number four, Ms. Biolo, December monthly expenditure report. I don't see her. You didn't have to hide back there.
Good evening. So this is the expenditure report through December, if I could get to it. You'll see where we're starting to surplus in some areas, especially in some certified positions, as you know, through attrition on vacancies. You'll also notice that in paras and in some school maintenance. And then if you look in the second page, you're going to notice the areas where we just... just discussed special education. So, right now, it will be, you know, be offset by the salary surplus. But you'll see the purchase service line, the anticipation of going in the hole between special education as well as pupil transportation. Right now, remaining intact, to be on target, of course, as we keep going through the remaining months, we are very much looking at each line closely, especially through budget preparation. So, not much really changing from the previous months, but, you know, again, just really, like analyzing each and every account and to see where we will end up. So, any questions?
Commissioner Sweeney?
Doreen, can you explain the swing space line and why that's currently showing in the red?
The swing space?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was some of the work that some of our maintenance positions had, were working at the St. Joseph's site. That was really mostly through the summer before school opened. So, we just wanted to set that apart, so we just created an account so that their time, their overtime, went to that line.
Okay. But we expect that to be mitigated, right?
Yeah, so that's something that, right now, is in our budget, but it could be through the project that this will be made up.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I'm glad you said offset. That's where I was going to go when I reviewed this. Outside, outside, outside.
[laughing]
And we talked a little bit about this in the Finance Committee meeting the other night, that our outside, which is so hard to predict, we're seeing very large deficits on. But you did say offset, so...
Well, I mean, it's...
In the coming months, because we're, what, 50% away through our school year budget, so to speak, are we going to recover with those offsets from other accounts that may be positive?
Yes, because, I mean, remember that this operating budget is only at the 158.3.
Right.
We have obviously offset it through contingency, because you'll see that our budget is a lot larger. Do I want that line item to be budgeted at that amount? Absolutely not. But we only have so much to work with. I mean, I have to budget for the positions that we have. So, I mean, so we take into account some of the attrition, you know, even through, sometimes through the paraprofessional line or the maintenance line, we have a lot of turnover, so...
And you know the outside accounts I've always been concerned with, and I know it's just so unpredictable. And I question what I feel we really are responsible for, but we are responsible, the way it's written right now. The only one that really worries me is public transportation. Now, does that include the outside transportation that we have to transport?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's everything.
So, maybe that one needs a notation or an asterisk to say outside as well.
Yep.
And, Mr. President, I'm very concerned with our responsibilities on the things that I note as outside. I've questioned it. We do the right thing, and we pay our outside responsibilities. I am not as confident that another district that has outside is paying the bill back to us, and I've worried about that for years, correct? And that really worries me. So, Commissioner Ursula, I think that's something on the Finance Committee we really need to take a look at, because I think we are doing the right thing, but I don't think other districts are doing the right thing by paying us back. And it's bothered me, I think, from day one that I've been on this committee, or on the board. So, I understand those red numbers. Obviously, we don't like them, but I do understand them. But I think we need to start getting a little tougher with those that may owe us money.
How easy or challenging would it be to delineate that valuation chain?
Well, that is one thing I've always asked for, is your basic, because I was in finance school a long, long time ago, and we did things in ledger books, and you know that I, she's already smiling, that I wanted always to be able to let our budget show a debit and credit column, but unfortunately, we're not able to do that, to show incoming, outgoing, to show the delta, et cetera, to get to a bottom line that better replicates what we're budgeting for. And unfortunately, the way it's structured, we're not really able to do that. And that includes money that goes to the city as a whole, vice just the Board of Education. I would love to see someday that that comes to fruition, that we can show a true debit and credit column on our budget, but we don't...
Is that the general fund flow?
There's items over the years that have gone to the general fund of the city, which, yes, they in turn send it to us most of the time, but it still shows us at a 158 that it doesn't represent those debits and credits. So, I'm probably way too deep into the financial world, right, Doreen?
A little bit.
But it's duly noted. I think it's an issue.
I know when I brought this up a few years ago, I was getting a lot of question mark emails, replies back when I was talking about this sort of stuff. But I think if we restructured the way we show our budget, I think it would be a much easier message to the public on how we're spending our money and where. But right now, that is not the way we do it.
Okay.
I can go into more deeper explanation for you, but I think, she's saying don't. I think only Doreen and I would understand it, but there's a debit and credit that we don't show that would help us in explaining our budget. How's that?
Okay.
Well, we, I mean, there is revenue that comes in that we can provide to you.
I see.
It may not offset...
You had an input revenue vector when I was chairing the committee.
Yeah.
I was confused on, and you clarified it to me.
Yeah. So, I mean, some of it is in the city general fund, and this is our portion of how it's, but there is revenue that does come in.
I remember I took a differential equations course in college, and my professor always said, "It can easily be seen." I will leave the details up to you.
[inaudible].
Yeah. Commissioner Sweeney?
There is a simple analysis that I used to ask for years ago, and it just simply says, "We have this much that comes in, and that includes what the city funds, what the ECS funds, and what our grants funds, minus what we budget out." And the difference can become that percentage that is actually on the taxpayers, and it's usually quite a bit less than that 50% that we get accused of all the time. So, I can go back and look for those. I'm sure I have a year or two of them.
Okay. When you're bored, you have nothing better to do. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Doreen.
All righty.
The next item, item number five, a report on chronic absenteeism, discipline with Dr. Rodriguez and Jackie Davis. And Catherine?
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners. We are here to provide you with an update on chronic absenteeism, and a majority of this will be delivered by Ms. Davis, but I also want to make sure that Kathy Gabrielson was here, because she is our new Director of Pupil Services. And as we transition over, I've been here as a constant to make sure that the work continues, and Jackie Davis, of course, has done a tremendous job to make sure that the work continues, specifically around the areas of chronic absenteeism, and making sure that we have timely and accurate data. So, with that, I will turn it over to Jackie and let her present some of this data to you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and of course, our student representatives. So, as a district, you know, we continue to stress the importance of attendance as it relates to academic achievement. But as we listen to the direction that the district is heading in terms of making our curriculum more relevant and rigorous, it is even more incumbent upon us as a system to do whatever we can to identify and eliminate any barriers that would keep a student from being in school every day on time. And so, that is the push that we are focusing on, just making sure that we identify those areas where we, as a system, could support our students and families, and being able to be present with us. So, we began this year early. We wanted to make sure that we got a good jump on attendance issues. So, in the month of September, we met every week with our attendance counselors. Our partners from Waterbury Youth Services attended those meetings. We wanted to be able to determine who were those students that needed early intervention. We didn't want to just wait until we saw that attendance was a problem and then respond to it. We wanted to be able to address that early. So, that's how we began the year. We continued the year trying to build capacity of our staff members to be able to respond to the needs that contribute to our chronic absenteeism. And so, we were able to participate in the Second Connecticut Student Attendance Symposium. And so, our attendance counselors, again, along with our partners from Waterbury Youth Services, was able to attend a seminar that was facilitated by the State Education Resource Center and Attendance Works, who was the national guru of attendance. And so, they were able to glean some really important information on how to respond to the different needs that we see. Based on the positive outcomes that Waterbury had last year, I was asked to represent Waterbury in one of the breakout sessions and share some of the practices that we've done here in our city. And so, that was a huge honor and a privilege to be able to speak on the work that my colleagues here have done, to sort of change the outcomes for students here. And so, that was an exciting piece of work that we've done this year. We continue to focus on making sure that we are intentional about using a multi-tiered system of support. When you address attendance, there's a need to only look at the extremes. So, we either look at perfect attendance, or those students who have severely abundant of absence because of whatever is going on in their life. And we sort of negate those students who are in between. And so, we're trying to make sure that we address the needs of all of our students. And so, at different points of the year, we try to be intentional about making sure that we're reaching out to all of our students, no matter where they are in terms of their attendance. So, at Day 90, which was our halfway point, we issued the 7-11 Challenge. And in that challenge, we had our student, our school, sorry, to look at those students who were missing seven to 11 days in the first half of the school year, and to be able to reach out to those students and provide individualized support. So, to find out what happened that first half of the school year, and to see if there was anything that we can do as a system to support them in improving their attendance for the second half of the year. So, we are in the midst of the 7-11 Challenge right now. Our secondary schools have done a phenomenal job in rolling out a campaigning, a messaging campaign that is exciting and fun and engaging for our students. When I reported last year to this board on chronic absenteeism, I shared some of the stuff that we did as a district to sort of promote attendance. This year, our schools have taken on that initiative and have done some pretty exciting things. So, at the bottom of the page, you can see some of the challenges that the school buildings themselves have put into place. On the second page, there's data about where we ended at the last, at the end of last school year. We did experience a reduction in chronic absenteeism from 18.2% in 2017-18 school year to 15.6% in 2018-19 school year. As a district, we did fall a bit short of our asset target. However, 14 of our schools did meet their chronic absenteeism asset target, which is an accomplishment considering that the previous year, only six schools had met that target. And so, our schools did a lot of work to make sure that they're moving in the right direction. Last year, 21 of our schools did improve their chronic absenteeism rate from the previous year. Another point of highlight is that the chronic absenteeism rate for students with disabilities decreased from 29.3% in the 2017 school year to 25.7% in the 2018 year. The next year, the next page shows where we are this year, year-to-date. So, if you look at where we were on January 31st of last year, we had a chronic absenteeism rate of 20.97%. This year, at January 31st, we were slightly lower at 19.22%, so we continue to improve on that chronic absenteeism rate. Even though our focus is on chronic absenteeism, we do continue to monitor our truant students and make sure that we are providing supports to them. At this time last year, there were 2,520 truant students. This year, there were 2,053 students. I included Waterbury Youth Services as our major partner in terms of truancy. We had 172 referrals, but that is not the only agency that we partner with in terms of addressing truancy with our students. The next page goes into our school discipline trends. For four years now, we have been, we've seen a decrease in our out-of-school and in-school suspension from year to, from year to year. If we look at the four-year trend, there's been a decrease of 29% in overall suspensions. As we look to provide more behavioral interventions, we continue to see the number of suspensions, behavioral interventions, I'm sorry, we see the number of sanctions decreasing from year to year. Again, looking at where we were in January of last year to January of this year, we see a 17% decrease in overall suspension rates for the year. So, the previous table showed the number of sanctions that were meted out against students. This table shows the number of distinct students who received an out-of-school suspension for this school year. So, you can see it's broken down by our elementary and K through eights, and our secondary and our two alternative programs. So, so far this year in regular education, and at the elementary level, 138 students have received an out-of-school suspension. In the special education programs in our elementary and K through eights, 80 students have received an out-of-school suspension. At the secondary level, in our alternative programs, 631 students in our regular education program have received an out-of-school suspension, and 386 of our special education students have received an out-of-school suspension. The final page shows where we are in terms of school-based arrests. So, if you look at that graph on the bottom, it compares the first 20 weeks of school last year to the first 20 weeks of school this year. And so, that green color, the darker green color, the heavier green color, represents the number of arrests by week last year, and that lighter green color represents the number of arrests this school year. And so, at Week 21, we were at less than half, sorry, Siri. At Week 21, we are at less than half of where we were last year. So, last year, at Week 21, we had 200 school-based arrests. This year, we are at 89. That is highly attributable to the great partnerships that we have with Waterbury Police Department, and their Keeping Individuals Driven for Success Program, and our Juvenile Review Board. So, that is the update on chronic absenteeism and school discipline.
Thank you very much. The trend lines are very hopeful and impressive, so thanks for all the diligent work. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just had a question for the numbers. Are these unique numbers? So, could one student who has, like, 10 suspensions, is that reflective here, or are these unique?
So, if you look at...
Looking at the special education elementary, there's 80. So, could one...
Those are distinct students.
Those are students, it's not...
Yes, those are students, not sanctions.
Okay. Thank you.
Question, Paul?
No. One more question.
Yep.
In terms of the, I'm very excited about the school-based arrests, because in our DIRV, we were the highest. So, this is really good news. But I'm wondering, what are, you mentioned a few things we're doing to address this issue. So, is that going to be reflective in what resources? You don't have to answer me now, but I think we need to continue to put the resources that we need to really continue to do this work, because, you know, we went from 20% of our kids, now we're down to whatever, 10 maybe, hopefully. So, I really think, you know, as we look at the budget, we really have to continue putting the resources necessary to keep these numbers going down, because it does take extra personnel, it does take professional development, it does take, you know, a culture change. it does take professional development, it does take, you know, a culture change that we're just not throwing kids out all the time. So, and our teachers need the tools, you know, we all really need to understand what are the, you know, the root causes here so that we can really address the needs of the students and the teachers and administrators to create that culture. So thank you, this is amazing work you're doing, but I think we have to continue investing in this work.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, great work, Jackie, on this. My question about regarding the arrests though is do we have a breakdown by middle school, high school?
We do. So one of the things that we've made sure is that we have actionable data. And so we could disaggregate this data to show where are some areas of concern, where we need to, as Commissioner Brown just said, where we need to allocate resources. And so we know some of the schools that need additional support and we've already started to put some provisions in place in those buildings to make sure that they have what they need to provide support for students. A couple of our buildings have started some student mentoring programs where they're partnering with community agencies to identify at-risk students and connecting them with resources to help them to talk about values, to talk about conflict resolution. And so we're starting to be, we're trying to be intentional about where we develop those programs and where we're allocating those resources.
Okay, is there some way you can provide that information to us?
Absolutely.
Because I hear this out in the community about the middle schools. So I just wanted to see where we were. Think that the results are great, but I just want to see how we're handling this, particularly with other middle schools. Next question is, have we discussed with the Waterbury Police Department the way they report arrests as opposed, the way we report it here in Waterbury as opposed to how it's reported in other districts? Have we begun that conversation with them?
We do. And so Waterbury Police Department has rightfully taken the stance that anytime that a student has to be removed from school grounds, that is going to count as an arrest for us for accountability purposes. And so I'm not sure that that's the practice in other districts, but for us, whenever a police is involved and they're, they have to remove a student from a campus, that is going to count as an arrest.
Okay, so what you're saying is that it's possible that in other districts, that behavior is reported differently as opposed to what is in Waterbury?
Correct.
Okay, so the police department has said that they're not going to change that?
So we've had conversations.
Yes.
And I don't want to speak for the police department.
Right, right.
But in my mind, in terms of accountability and making sure that, you know, we are providing above-the-board services for our students, everything that happens with an officer is documented as such.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Stango, then Commissioner Vanstone after that.
I'm looking at the handout sheet that talks about the number of distinct students receiving an out-of-school suspension. And then I'm coming down to secondary and alternative program numbers. And I'm wondering the number of out-of-school suspensions we have in, specifically in the alternative programs. I'm wondering if it's higher, do you have that breakdown at all? Is that what brings the number up or?
We could provide that breakdown, but just on sheer statistics of the population, you know, knowing that there's more students at the middle school and high school level, they're going to attribute a larger number of these, but we could get you a percentage of what the special programs are.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that brought, if that was out of percentage-wise.
Okay, we could do that breakdown.
And the other question I would have along the same lines is the special education suspensions. If a student is in alternative program, say in the, I want to say the, used to be the the school up, up in the-
State Street.
Pal, State Street, now it's State Street, right. If that student is a special ed student, that whole school is, would that be counted in, would not be counted in the alternative program? Then it'd be accounted in the special ed numbers?
Right, because that would be the distinct number for, so there are special education students at Enlightenment, so Enlightenment being an alternative program.
Right.
And State Street being primarily all special education students.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. While we're asking for breakdowns, I'll ask for another breakdown, same sheet. Can we look at suspensions at our comprehensive middles versus our neighborhood K through eights for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grades?
You want in-school and out-of-school?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we've, for a long time, have been patting ourselves on the back about how great neighborhood schools are and this might be something that either helps that argument or not. One other question, and I ask this kind of every time we do this exercise, obviously excited at the direction things are heading. I always come back to the question of why though? You know, the natural-born cynic in me thinks numbers go down because we want numbers to go down. So talking specifically for discipline, not necessarily the chronic absentee portion, with the out-of-school and in-school suspensions decreasing at the rate they are, that's a thing to be lauded. Is that because behavior is getting better? Is it because we're actively trying not to suspend kids or a little bit of both?
I think that there's multi, it's a multifaceted approach because one part of it is when we look at chronic absenteeism, our out-of-school suspensions attribute to that number as well.
Sure.
So we, of course, would like that number to decrease, but I always look at behavior as the same, the same we look at academics, you know? When you look at, in academics, our job is to be the intervention in which students start to achieve and grow in the academic world. Same thing for behavior. When we have PBIS and restorative practices in our schools, we're not, when a student misbehaves, then we're working with that student to teach them the appropriate behaviors thereby decreasing the amount of offenses in which they would be put in ISS or out-of-school suspension. And at the same time, I know that a lot of the professional development that teachers have been engaged in is that they're also working on building positive relationships with students. So there's more than one answer to that question. I mean, it's going to be a multifaceted approach. And again, also what you inspect and expect gets done, right? So we specifically want to make sure that the whole reasoning behind chronic absenteeism is that you want students in schools, they can learn. The same happens with out-of-school suspensions. You want students in school so that they can learn. And alternatives to suspension are working with students through behavior technicians, through social workers, through counselors to make sure that there are appropriate interventions so that they don't escalate to an offense that would cause them to be suspended.
And I don't think I disagree with anything you said. I also keep in mind, you know, sometimes doing all we can for a child who is having difficulties, making sure he has, or he or she has all those interventions is important, but I just want to make sure we're never sending a kid back to the classroom who we shouldn't be. You know, just as important to that kid's education as the 25 other kids in that class.
Agreed.
So if, you know, if one child or two children, you know, need to be disciplined in a manner fitting to whatever they're doing, I don't think that their educational freedom should be put any higher than the other kids in the class. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping a balance and doing everything that should be done from an educational standpoint, not necessarily just a filling out a ledger to send up to Hartford to feel good about it.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Vanstone?
Sorry, I apologize.
Apology accepted.
Thank you. The one thing I, either me or someone else on this board often asks when we get this handout every year is, do we get to see one for the adults in the building? Some type of absentee report for administrators, teachers, paras, lunch ladies, the adults in the building. Because I think oftentimes when we're talking about making sure that we can get close to 182 days of learning, you know, the kid missing 10 is bad. The adults in their life missing another six isn't good either.
Yes, we will provide that for you.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Commissioner Sweeney?
Jackie, can you tell me what the top three individualized supports for tier-two students might be? What are, what are the top three things we need to do to get kids to come to school in those situations?
So I will say top three is relationship. Number two, relationship. Number three, relationship. And so we try to make sure that at every level, the kid has that one-on-one touch with another person that's saying, we want you here and if you're not here, we're going to do what we can to sort of help you. That's on tier one. If it's, you know, every time a student comes in the classroom, we're going to give them a high five and say, oh, we're glad to see you this morning. Or on a tier-two level where it's reaching out to that student and finding out what's going on that's keeping them from coming to school and offering them some resources on what to do. And so helping them to know that they have that person in the building that they could go to. Some of our buildings, one of the things that they have done is for the 7-11 challenge, they've taken that list of students and provided it to the staff and said, okay, who in the building has a relationship with this student? Who would like to be the point person for this student? So that when they come in in the morning, you see them, you say, what's up? Let's get going. How can we have a good day today? You know, just a point of contact, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just for my own curiosity, in your toolbox, does that also include to the parent on helping behavioral change at that level?
Absolutely, especially on the elementary level. So it looks a little bit different, the tiered level supports looks a little bit different than the elementary level versus the secondary level. By the time they're at the secondary level, they run the house. They, at least they think they do. And so they make most of the decisions in terms of their attendance. At the elementary level, it is absolutely working more so with the parents. And so we are doing a lot now to provide supports for our parent liaisons on how to engage with parents and making them, helping them to understand the importance of attendance and helping them to understand that we know that life happens and when crises come up, we have resources that we can connect them to. So helping them to know that they can come to us if there are issues that would keep their child from being in school.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Do we have a lot of teacher buy-in as far as being willing to be that point person for a student to, you know, say, I need to excuse myself to go see Ms. Smith. Staff-wise, are our teachers buying into, okay, I want to keep you in school, you know, I want you to stay on track and allowing the student to be able to take that five minutes to go and see Ms. Smith versus no, this is not going to happen, this is the way it is and let's get moving?
So in the example-
Hot potato, hot potato.
So in the example that I referenced, it was actually the teachers who were the ones who volunteered to be that point person. So it wasn't something that was assigned to them. I think one of the things that has been important is sort of shifting the messaging behind attendance, even as how we deal with it as staff. In the past, it has been a very punitive thing where you reach out to the parent and say, your child has missed this many days, you know, and we would give them a ticket or whatever the consequence would be. I think as a system, we have to begin to shift how we look at attendance and how we interact with parents and say, we want your child here because we want them to be able to succeed. And when they're not here, we recognize that that puts them at a disadvantage and they have to work that much harder to catch up and to become who we know they can become. And so I think our teachers recognize that attendance affects their goals for their classrooms, that if a child is not there, they're not able to impart the knowledge that's needed for that child to go on and succeed. And so our teachers absolutely are on board in terms of spreading that message of attendance. Again, I think one of the key points in being effective and stressing attendance in a system is that that message is not housed with one person. It's not the job of the attendance counselor. It's not just the job of the principal. It's the job of every adult in that building to stress that a child has to be in school every day.
Commissioner, Vice President Harvey?
Thank you. One more question.
Go ahead. Does that also go for that behavioral child? Are they still getting that same type of support where I need five minutes to say, hey, let me go and see Ms. Smith because Ms. Smith understands my issue?
Right. Again, I think it goes back to helping people see the connection between attendance, academics, and behavior. If a child is not in the classroom, they're not getting the instruction. When they return to the classroom, they're further behind their classmates. And as they're further behind in their classmates and they can't do the work, they tend to act out more, which then just continues to loop in that cycle. And so helping everyone, staff, parents, students, to see that connection, I think is critically important, you know, so we can identify how to stop the cycle. You know, how do we get it to the point where every student in that classroom feels like they're up to par and that they can, if they don't understand something, they know how they can find out how to get to where they need to be.
Thank you.
Vice President Harvey?
Is this okay? Did you have more questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. You know, you may or may not be able to answer this question, but are we proactively, okay, this is the flu season and, you know, you know, people are, I saw my niece walking around with, you know, something over, you know, something over her mouth or something like that. And I'm just wondering, are we proactively reminding our students about, you know, washing their hands, not coughing, you know, et cetera, you know, out in the classroom, covering their mouths, et cetera, so as to prevent other students from, you know, catching colds and things like that? I don't know if we work with the health department on that, but just wondering if we do that.
So the health department did sit on our district chronic absenteeism team to discuss some of those issues. However, I will say that's probably an area at the district level that we should give more information, I mean, more attention to. I can say in some buildings, they are very proactive in terms of passing out literature. When a parent comes in with a concern about sickness or if a school is alerted to a parent's concern about sickness, they will provide them with educational materials. Again, we've been able to partner with Attendance Works that has a lot of great resources about when do you keep a child? You know, I believe that's a concern of us all. You know, when, should we just say, nope, fight through it, you're okay, everything will be fine? Or when is it really a time where a child needs to stay home and just recuperate for themselves as well as for the other people in the building? And so I will admit, as a district, that's something that we need to pay more attention to on a district level and make sure that that's happening across the board with our buildings.
Thank you.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Thank you. I do, probably really not a question, more of a statement, but I applaud, you know, the entire district and the staff for even improving the numbers. I have seen in the past, it is a collaborative effort and like you said, relationships is very important. I think once the teachers or the staff know their students knows the family or know their dynamics, then they can see maybe signs of either a behavior about to happen or if there's bullying especially, I've heard that a lot. So you'll get a lot of chronic absenteeism because they're afraid to come to school due to the bullying and the same for the behavior. So the relationship is what I'm trying to get at because I think once you know a student and you know that they're not acting the same, then something's not right. Back when I was in Kennedy High School, they had peer helpers where sometimes students would maybe not, you know, be willing to talk to an adult, but they would talk to a peer. And then that person was trained to then know the difference between, okay, now I need to seek an adult help to get, you know what I mean? Especially in this day and age, kids are more apt to speak to their fellow classmate than they will a teacher. But I do agree that they need to have a good relationship with a staff member. It could be anybody. It just really takes one person to really pay attention and get to know who they are to kind of, as a preventative, you know, measure. But again, I do want to applaud you guys, but just kind of like, I love that you kept saying, relationship, relationship. But I think it's even important to build that relationship between the parents and the staff. And I know there's a lot of, you know, issues. Parents are like, I've tried to reach out to the teacher, administrators, and I'm not getting through, what's going on? And then you get the mama bear that now is into a grizzly bear because they're really being protective over their child as, you know- being protective over their child as, you know, I've, you know, I've been myself. So just kind of like build that relationship amongst the whole, you know, staff. And like you've mentioned before, so I applaud you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
You know, I'd be very interested in our capacity for mental health services. I've heard of ICAPs, you know, coming in to help the children, how effective that is, you know, what other resources are we utilizing in terms of mental health, especially for, you know, the little kids, the special ed students who are being suspended for their behavior where that behavior is part of their IEP. So I'm just curious as to, do we have the capacity? How are we doing there? And, you know, maybe you can't answer me now, but I think that's very, very important. And the help, maybe the teachers need more help because I have heard from parents that their little kids in kindergarten and first grade are being suspended a lot for behavior that's part of their IEP. So, you know, I don't have firsthand knowledge about it, but I think as a system, the mental health issues are real for our kids. And I know Darren has been the champion of the SEL, you know, social emotional learning and the trainings that have been going on. So I think we're trying to really address it, but I like to get a handle on what capacity we really have for high-level intervention for these kids who have really behavior disorders and who are kicking and biting and really, really not appropriate to stay in a classroom. I understand that, but I think there needs to be a balance. So I'd be interested to find out what we have.
Thank you. Did you want to talk? Any more questions, comments?
Nope.
Well, thank you very much. Great report.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, and let us know when we need to help you. Our next item is item number six, and it's Dr. Ruffensfor on a partnership description of an early college high school program.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to switch seats. There's a PowerPoint. Okay. Perfect. We can turn the light off. Okay. I'm going to start off very briefly to get everybody to where we started and to why we're here today and what is this thing that we're calling early college high school. I want to go back to when the board met and wrote a new vision, a new mission and core values for the district. I'm not going to repeat everything, but I think that it resonates when the board says the mission of Waterbury Public Schools is to inspire and prepare every student to be successful in and beyond school. And I think you will see that that's what we're trying to do with everything that we want to add on behalf of students in the district. And that the vision is that all Waterbury Public School students will graduate, graduate ready to transform their world. Even in the portrait of a graduate, we were very specific to say, "If this is what we value, then very importantly, we're going to have to create a system that allows that to happen because it doesn't happen automatically." And the board also went on to identify core values, which will drive everything that we do moving forward in our system. It's driving our strategic plan, which we are currently working on. Many months ago, we also identified that it was extremely important that we took care of all of the students in the system, not just some. So all, meaning all, we recognized there were some disparities, especially in the high-achieving advanced courses and academically rigorous courses for students that really aspired for much more. We were a district of interventions. We basically stayed at interventions. We tried to do everything we could to catch everybody up, but we needed to recognize that there were students that were probably bored, that could excel and could easily excel, but we did not have an academically rigorous environment that allowed them to do that. In the portrait of a graduate, I kept moving along, in the portrait of a graduate, we identified those indicators that were very important. Lots of community input, some student input, campus principals and teacher input, board input, lots of input from community, including our workforce development and community partners. And we came up with Portrait of a Graduate. As you can see, it has led a lot of the work that we have done thus far. We also said that we wanted to offer a portfolio of opportunities for our students, and we identified that to the board several months ago by explaining that we wanted our students to have opportunities to be college and career and life-ready, and that aligns with the vision and the mission. We recognized we had some quality pre-K to post-secondary experiences in our district. Some of our students do have opportunities to take dual credit courses with UConn or with Nuggetalk Valley and with Post. We do have pre-K, the eighth-grade community schools in our district. Our four pre-K eight schools are called community schools, although they're not completely developed, they are called community schools. We have the Lottery and Magnet schools, Waterbury Career Academy, we have Waterbury Arts Middle and High School, we have Rotella, which we're very proud that they are a school of distinction, and we have Maloney Elementary, which is a magnet as well. We have the comprehensive middle schools. We have the Transition Academy, which we started this year at Willby High School. We have very strong foundations in our pre-K to eight schools, but we were by design wanting to focus on college and career pathways. And we said that college and career pathways was not something that we only did at one of our high schools, such as Career Academy, but rather, we had courses that students were taking at all of our comprehensive high schools, but not necessarily aligned to pathways that the state of Connecticut is making available for workforce development, for college, for scholarships, for opportunities to grow and develop, and we wanted to create those. We wanted those at Crosby and Kennedy and Willby High School as well. And there was some talk about an early college high school. While early college opportunities may have been offered in the district, it was certainly not the same thing as an early college high school. And we recognized that we had a strength in our alternative school programs, and we had a very special alliance with the Manufacturing Alliance Service Corporation, which we call MASC, and we currently have students that participate. They participate in the summer, and they also continue to participate even during the school year with an extended program that they attend after school. So we had those pieces, but we wanted to elaborate and get especially intentional about, so what are those pathways going to look like in all of our schools? And so the very next slide shows you in a very abbreviated form, and I'll have opportunities many weeks from now to even elaborate more. But these are some career pathways that we're planning on implementing in the schools beginning in 2021. And why these are very important is because it takes us out of the disconnect that we previously had where students may have taken an elective course, but it was not an elective course that was tied into a career path that might lead them to a certification or a credential or opportunities to really explore and have internships and really connect with college and career readiness and post-secondary education options. We wanted that available for all of the students by creating those pathways within schools. So instead of students taking isolated courses, we wanted them to focus on something. Many of the schools had parts of it, but very few of the schools had a complete pathway. And so you will see some of these pathways that we are working on and we plan on offering at our high schools: business, finance, marketing, and entrepreneurship; information technology and engineering; health sciences; education and training; manufacturing; construction and industrial systems; and early college high school with Post University, which I will elaborate on this evening. That's my purpose. But it came out of all of this. So early college high school, what is it? Early college high school is a high school that offers students an opportunity, beginning in ninth grade, to take part in college-level courses and that specifically allows students to earn college credit while freshmen with the opportunity to not only graduate from high school in four years, but they can also graduate with an associate's degree. Even if the student does not complete an associate's degree, they will all complete college, they will all complete high school with their high school diploma and college credits that will surpass what a student may be able to receive in a traditional, non- early college high school. So opportunities. We know the research says that if students have an opportunity to take part and to be successful in a college experience, the likelihood of that student remaining and obtaining a degree intensifies. And so we want to provide that for our students in Waterbury. We also know that early college high schools are particularly successful for students that may not have believed they had an opportunity to succeed in a post-secondary environment. Many students are geared into workforce. They may not see the importance or the connectivity with some kind of post-secondary connection. Early college high school affords that connection very early on, so the relevance is there. We also know that early college high school proves to be especially beneficial for students that may be disenfranchised with the district or disenfranchised with school or may feel a disconnect, may also not believe that they could because of financial purposes or financial reasons, and may not traditionally have been identified by their school as a student that's capable of producing in a very highly academic environment. Most of the times, the students that are identified that do exceedingly well in an early college high school come from low-income status or backgrounds that are underrepresented in higher ed, and particularly, those could be children of color, ELL students, or students that come in and may not have a connectivity within their school or school environment, very smart, very bright, just probably did not see themselves as being able to complete college. Many of these students are students that may have been the first person to graduate from a college in their families. So early college high school is all of that. It's not only for that child, but it's for all children who really aspire to participate in an early college environment while attending high school because the high school provides the support for them to be successful as well. So it's not only about academics, very strong academics, of course, it's guaranteed, but it also comes with the supports. So it's not a matter of you get in there and you sink or swim, it's how do you create a structure within a high school to allow the student to be successful if they struggle? Because honestly, many students do struggle in their freshman year away at college. Some colleges now are providing those resources, but a few years ago, there were no resources. If you went to college, you either succeeded or you failed, and that was the end of the story. And so creating a structure in a high school to allow our students to experience that success, experience the struggle, but with the support to be successful, is what an early college high school is all about. We are very pleased that Post University has stepped up and collaboratively. And when I say collaboratively, they have met in a manner that a true partnership exists with my staff, Dr. Rodriguez, Mr. Schwartz, Dr. Epperson, side by side with Post University and their academic team to design a program that is the right program for Waterbury. It connects to the career paths that we are creating. It is not only taking courses for the sake of taking college courses, it's taking college courses that students could actually use when they leave Waterbury and can either go on to Post and complete their bachelor's degree for little to no cost to them. In addition, if a student chooses to leave after the high school with two years of their associate's degree, they can also choose to go to any other college or university. And based upon whether the college will accept all of the courses or some of the courses, all of the students will have an opportunity to leave with college courses. But they are guaranteed that if they are doing very well in the early college high that we are creating here, that they could go on to Post for two years to obtain their bachelor's degree for little to no cost. And I think that is a huge game changer for many of the youth across the city. Post University will offer six career paths, some very similar to ours: marketing, legal studies, accounting, criminal justice, management, and early childhood education. If you'll notice, those are very much aligned to what we would want our students to be exposed to. Does not mean that they have to commit to this for life, but the courses that the students will be taking will also afford them an opportunity that if they're not really certain of what their major is going to be, those courses are going to be applicable to just about any career path that they would choose. In other words, they're not courses that students will attend as fluff, those are courses that students can attend that will lead them to something beyond, even if they do not know today what they aspire to be. I've included two slides with just some information about what the first year and second year will look like. We have a four-year design. But the first year, the students, beginning in the fall of 2020, would take a college success seminar, which is very typical to what early college high schools across the nation would take to prepare a student for the college experience. The second semester, they would take Introduction to Computing, and then they would take an English college writing course. And then you can see what they potentially could offer and would take in the second year. And I'm not going to go through the entire four-year program because at this point, I just wanted to share with the board and to share with everybody how excited we are about this opportunity for our students to participate in such a well-collaboratively-created program of study that could be a life changer for many of our students here in Waterbury. And so I'm happy to bring that to you. I do remember when I was first coming to Waterbury, even before I was officially superintendent, and you talked a little bit about an early college opportunity. I think this brings it to fruition in a partnership that was collaboratively-developed and we're ready to move forward. Of course, we have the official signing and the press conference coming up next week on the 11th. On the 11th will be the first of very many community forums because I'd like to take this out and to talk with students, talk with parents about what this means and what it could mean for them before we actually start in the actual registration process. But the registration process will be done very much side-by-side with Post. Our branding will be side-by-side with Post, and we're very happy that it's going to be at Crosby High School. So we see Crosby High School with the opportunity, with all of our eighth graders across the city, and especially the students that are at the Academic Academy, having an opportunity to apply. We're going to take this on the road, so to speak, because I want all of our eighth graders and their families to know what this is. But very importantly, I want everyone, even in pre-K through eighth grade, to know what this is because this opens up opportunities for students that we have not yet seen the full impact this could have over years. So while we are starting with a small cohort, anywhere from 25 to 35 students in year one, we believe this is going to grow. We've already started getting some questions and excitement around, "Well, how do we register?" Well, we're not even there yet. But it's an excitement. I think that certainly after tonight and after the 11th, we're going to start seeing more interest around what an early college high school can and will do. I look forward to working with Crosby and Principal Gopie and the location of where it's going to be in the school. I do have some ideas about what I would see the school to look like to turn it into a collegiate-looking kind of learning environment for students. And I almost forgot this part, but Post also offers an opportunity for the students enrolled in the first cohort and subsequent cohorts, an opportunity to purchase a computer. So at the same cost that they provide to their own college students now, which will be at a tremendous reduction of cost, we will be able to provide that for the students as well as all of the resources that they need to be successful in this program. The students will eventually have the same kind of supports that the Post students have, whether it's, you know, of course, the beginning will be an online learning course, but subsequent courses could also be between blended learning, and it could also be on the Post campus as students move on into their junior, senior year. And so the technology will be available to them, or resources available to them, and it's our responsibility for us in Waterbury to create a structure that allows them to be successful in that learning environment as a new early college high school, school within a school model in Crosby.
Wow. Woo-hoo.
Great news.
All right.
Congratulations. Any questions? Well, start with Vice President Harvey.
I'll hand to the students, Mr. President.
Oh, you can. I was going to ask him to chime in at some point, too.
Okay, okay. Just...
Just real quick, I was trying to figure out in my mind the logistics of, you know, where the students would take the courses, and I think you answered that, that they would be at Crosby.
Yes, everything the students will take in year one and possibly year two will be in-house.
Okay.
Online, at Crosby.
At Crosby, okay. So, will the faculty, who will be teaching the courses, the college courses?
Well, the online courses are taught online.
Everything's online?
The online courses are taught by Post staff online.
Got it. So, the faculty from Post will be where, when they teach?
We have no idea, because when you teach online, you could be anywhere.
Okay.
Including your living room.
Okay, okay.
But, so, the courses, this is what kind of excites me more than anything, is the fact that a student will, because every student, a few years back, I would say five years back, every student that went to college five years back probably has taken at least one online course once they got to college. So, more now than ever before. You have to take an online course, that's just the way that it is. So, now our students will have an opportunity to do that and experience it while they're still in high school. And so, an example of what it could look like, they're going to have seven to eight period classes, just like every other child does in the whole system. One of those classes will be their college class at Crosby in a classroom with a facilitator, while they take their online course, individualized, with that teacher, with their own computer.
Okay. That's the way of the future.
That is the way that it's going.
Thank you. Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Doctor, when you talk about the...
Oh, my goodness. Didn't know this.
To help desk when Post's calling her.
That's the fight song for the new early college high school.
We'll have to have one, you know?
I think that's Post calling you right now.
To help desk.
Somebody might have tweeted this out, I don't know, Sharon. Maybe it's the job.
When the student takes the course online in Crosby and they're part of this program, are they taking it during the regular school day?
Yes.
So, if they're taking it during the regular school day, what is it in our curriculum that they're not taking, or is it going to be fit in during a free period, or...
Well, they shouldn't have a free period, but they should have an elective, or two. They should have one or two electives that need to be built into everybody's schedule, all students' schedules. And so, as we look at scheduling for our schools next year, that could take the place of an elective course, if it's taking them to this college-bound curriculum.
And, so, when this student takes this college course, therefore, and they're getting a graduate, they're getting a diploma from the city of Waterbury when they're a high school graduate, they will have completed our curriculum in the high school?
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. That was my question, thank you.
Yes, they complete both.
Commissioner Sweeney.
So, Dr. Ruffin, to you and your staff, extremely well-thought-out vision, so happy to see it come to fruition. I know you worked hard on it, but this is absolutely amazing, and I wish that there had been something like this all those decades ago, when I was a student at Crosby, because coming from a family of seven, not all of us got that opportunity for college. So, I think this is going to be a great opportunity for kids who, especially financially, don't have that opportunity. So, thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vance.
More of a comment than a question. I remember when Tom and I had gone down to visit you in Tennessee before we brought you up, when we were in Jackson Madison, a lot of the conversation we had down there was the close relationship we had with the local school. Was it Jackson State? What was the school?
It was Jackson State Community College. They were a great partner, just like Post. They sat right there with us.
And we had administration from the college, as well as your administration there, and, you know, the excitement that everyone talked about implementing it, getting it going, and, you know, the early outcomes you were seeing were infectious, and it was something that I, once we got you up here, I was incredibly excited to see if we could pull this off, and I'm glad that we found a partner in Post who has done some great things with this city, and I think is poised to do a lot more great things. We have a couple Post graduates around the table, and I think that this is going to be a great first step, and I look to more and more, you know, kind of, you know, building upon this future for all the students here in Waterbury. It's a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brown.
I just had a question. Is this only open to students at Crosby High School?
No, it's open to all students in currently eighth grade, going to be ninth next year. It's open to all of them to apply.
So, if I'm supposed to go to Willby, I could apply to go to this program?
Yes.
And physically go to Crosby?
Yes.
And take all the courses, you know, as you just explained, take the regular courses plus the early college high courses?
All at Crosby.
Huh. What's our capacity?
Right now, I could not tell you.
Yeah.
Because with the Academic Academy, which is growing exponentially, promising to grow next year even more so, I can't tell you what the capacity is at the moment. But it needs to have a capacity of over 120 additional students as we continue to grow this program.
Okay, because that's kind of, when I read it, it sounded like you had to have a certain number of students even to make the class viable.
Yes.
I think there were 10 in a class that at least had to be there.
Yeah, it's going to have more than 10, because we're poised to accept anywhere from 25 to 35 this first year.
Okay. Wow, that's awesome.
So, that's 25 to 35 students that would apply to the early college high school at Crosby, get accepted from a pool of however many candidates or applicants that we receive, and all of the 25 to 35 will be taking a course at Post.
Okay. Good. And the other question I had is maybe not specifically to that, but are we envisioning the Academic Academies that we have at Wallace now going to the other schools, or are we going to expand the Wallace one?
No, the academy is the academy at Wallace, grades four through eighth.
Okay, so that's going to stay at Wallace. We're not envisioning duplicating the academy in the others?
No, that would dilute the resources that we currently have.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go to Commissioner Vance, and then we'll go to Commissioner Stango this time.
These popped up as I was hearing other questions. A couple things. So, I'm a Willby student, or I'm about to be a Willby student, and I decided, talked to my parents, I want to apply for this, I do our application process, and I am accepted. I'm also a baseball player. Who do I play baseball for? Or do I not play baseball for anybody?
You know, I cannot answer that today, but I do know that that has come up in other conversations. I would defer that to someone who perhaps has dealt with that, because they're coming in as freshmen. I'm not sure if they don't play for the team of the school that they are going to be attending, since they're going to be freshmen. But I don't understand all of the athletic rules here in Connecticut enough to be 100% certain.
Okay. My second question, similar. Now, I've gone through all four years, and I'm about to graduate. What does my diploma say?
Your diploma says Crosby High School, early college high school.
That's right.
Crosby High School. So, Crosby High School. Regardless of what school the student would typically have attended, if they're accepted into this early college high, they would be a Crosby High School student in the early college high school.
Cool.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Doctor, much like we did at the Wallace, you know, the Academic Academy, would we need to assign an administrator or coordinator to bring this program together on a day-to-day basis?
Yes. And for a perhaps lengthier conversation I would like to have with all members of the board, what I envision happening is, because now we have built, are building a structure to support college and career readiness, we really need to take a look at the structures that we have in the district that really support that happening. And I'll give you an example. There are some very exciting opportunities for students in the Connecticut commitment that very few people really know about, but it exists out there, and the students are possibly getting notification on an individual level, but there's really no one driving that to make certain that our students and our families know that there is a connection. There very well could be, you know, Waterbury promised that Commissioner Harvey has been working on for some time, and when that comes to fruition, there has to be someone that drives and connects this so that our students note that it exists. Because our students and families do not know all of the wonderful things that are happening, and the students usually tell you that, you know, either in a student advisory or then, you know, they'll usually say, I didn't know. And because the structure of our current guidance counseling doesn't really lend itself to career guidance and to really expanding on what these opportunities are, including completion of FAFSA, because it doesn't expand to that, I think we have a lot of lost opportunities. So, I will be speaking with you about what a support system looks like for college and career readiness. You know, we have some excellent supervisors that can drive curriculum and instruction, but without someone to also drive the student's success and the student applications to all of these great programs that we're having, I think that it's just a hit and a miss, and we need to do better than that. So, I will be coming to you. I have a proposal, it's, I've got it, but I haven't had a chance to really, you know, sit down and talk with you. It really looks like that whole office of supporting what we're trying to do on behalf of children. It brings together the magnet schools that we currently have, where we have over 1,000 students on a waiting list. It brings together the fact that we have, you know, so we have a need. I mean, the families and the students are telling you what they're asking for. And so, we have the Academic Academy, grades four through eight. We're going to have an early college high school. We're going to have those career pathways at all of the high schools. We're going to have opportunities for our transition program to grow and to take care of our special needs students as well. And there may be some other innovative programs that we bring in, but we have to have a connector. We have to have an outside, a partner, someone who can connect the workforce, because as we create an early college high and we create career pathways, we need someone to help with internship for students, because our students are not going to learn in a traditional classroom. They need to learn by being exposed to internships. Somebody needs to drive that, because it's not going to happen just because it's a good idea. And so, to create a structure of college and career readiness that understands those outside partners, that can connect internships for students, and can get them to the work and interning and community service, we need that connector. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Vivian, the floor is yours.
I was just wondering, how does this, these classes affect your GPA and the way it's weighted? Are the freshmen that aren't participating in the program going to be disadvantaged because their classes aren't going to be weighted as much as other students?
I think that's a great question, Vivian, and right now, I don't know the answer to that, because it could do two things, and we want to be cognizant of that before. Actually, what it could do is it could put the student at an extreme advantage over other students, because it could be that you weigh the college course, very similar to an AP course, and they would get more points for it than the others. So, it could skew the whole thing, if we're not very intentional about how we create that structure. I don't see it as putting the student at a disadvantage at all, but we want to make certain that it's fair, and we communicate that to students and families so that they could know, well, if you're in an early college high school, automatically, you know, then you're going to have the highest GPA, because you're taking these weighted courses. So, we have not gotten to that point yet, but we have to, even before students start taking that course.
Karen, give her the microphone. Thanks. If a student was interested in applying to, or taking another class, how much room would they have to take that class, like an additional AP class? I know that this is a college program, but if a student wanted to take an AP class that would be eventually applicable to other colleges other than Post, would they be able to do that with their schedule? How much room do they have to be able to take additional classes at Crosby that are underneath this program?
Sure, because the classes at Crosby are going to be very similar to the classes that you have at Kennedy and SOAR, or Kennedy, or Willby, you know, and Adam, or an ACE that we currently have. They'll be very similar, because I noticed that a lot of those classes are AP classes. So, students at Crosby will have an opportunity to take AP classes also. But we also recognize that a student that takes an AP class, some universities will not accept the AP credit unless you have a three, four, or five, and some colleges won't accept it regardless of your three, four, or five. So, we want to try to get our students situated with courses that we are pretty confident that if you took it and you did very well, that you would gain that credit, as opposed to, you might if you have a three, four, or five, and it depends on which college or university you're going to go to. So, for instance, if you can take seven courses here, here at Kennedy, you would take seven courses at Crosby. One of those courses would be an early college high offering of an online college credit.
Thank you.
Reese, anything on your mind?
Actually, I was wondering, say, in eighth grade? Sorry. In eighth grade, I feel like not many students realize the value of a program like this. And, you know, because in eighth grade, I really wasn't thinking all the way into college. I was worried about where I was going to high school. So, is there a way you're going to be able to inform these students of how important and valuable this program could actually be to their future? Because somewhere down the line, they could be like, wow, I really wish I did that. So, is there a way you can make sure they know what they're missing out on?
Sure. One thing is, I'd like to take some of the students with me to talk about it, but, and it's a very, very good question, because that actually does happen. You know, the first year of a program, people say, well, that sounds like a good idea, you go first. And then they decide, and then you do it, and then, you know, usually, because students start talking about it, then other people become excited about it, and then they want to know, well, is it too late that I could join? So, while I cannot say that's what's going to happen here in Waterbury, that did happen in Jackson, that students went into the program, and, you know, typical, I don't know if I want to work that hard, you know, Dr. Ruffin, I don't really want to work that hard, so I'm probably not going to go to early college high, and then you had someone whose parent says, no, you are going to go. This is a good program, and it's not going to cost me anything, so you need to go. And then you have other students that were quite excited. So, the first cohort, once they got to be 10th graders, there were actually students that came to me and said, we hear, this is really good, can we enroll? And so, we were able to do that at the time. I can't say that that's how this program is going to be designed, but as it gained momentum and understanding across the city, it also gained the interest and the desire from other students. So, yes, we're going to do a really good job, I hope, to go to every one of the schools here in Waterbury and speak to the eighth graders. What I'd like to do is speak to the eighth graders and their parents, to let them know what this could mean for them. And then, I can't promise that in the 10th grade, they'll have an opportunity to do that, but I can say that with the time that we have, I think we can honestly say we're going to try to reach, and will successfully reach the eighth grade and try to get the parents at those community forums. And the first one is on the 11th, at 6:00 at West Side.
Okay, so, how will transportation work if you're in a different district, but you're interested in the program, and if it's only offered at Crosby?
We currently do that for the Academic Academy, so we transport the students from other schools wherever they're zoned for. We pick them up, and then we bring them over to Wallace. We do the same thing for the early college high.
Thank you to both of you, it's our great comments and questions.
I love it.
Now, you're going to be the ambassador.
It's not fair that they ask the best questions all night.
Say again?
It's not fair that they ask the best questions all night.
It's very fair. They're now going to be the student ambassadors that help the journey of getting the word out. Commissioner Stango.
Yeah, just one final question on my part. What would the application process look like, doctor? What are the requirements? And would any person that we have now in the Academic Academy automatically be able to move to that new program at Crosby?
There's not automatic movement. Everyone who is interested will need to apply. With the agreement with Post, we are saying a 3.0 average, so the student would need a 3.0. a 3.0. It will come with recommendations from their teachers, but not solely recommendations. It will be a very simple application process, but we're going to be able to gather some test scores, and not just one test score, but multiple scores that we would look at before someone is going to be accepted, as well as having interviews, similar to the academy, student interview with a panel, which will include staff from Waterbury, staff from Post, and then for the student and for the parent, and then a selection process, a selection will be made thereafter with notification in advance so that parents and students can make plans for the fall.
Okay, and just one more thing, again, things popping in my mind here. Maybe I missed it. Do we have a number that we're looking at? Is it 300 students?
Between 25 to 35 students in year one.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? Going once, going twice. We're done. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
The coming out party is on Tuesday, the 11th, at the press conference, and that's at 4:00 in the afternoon?
Yes, at Post downtown.
All right, and thank you for our student representatives. Great questions. Thanks for being involved. Items seven and eight, I guess, I don't see Will Clark, so this is a placeholder?
Doreen is here.
Oh, Doreen is here, okay. Come on down, Doreen. The spotlight's on you.
Item 7, and/or city departments, so you'll see that if anybody has any questions or anything.
Could you read through all the applications, please?
In my no detail.
I'm not falling for it.
Way to go, Doreen.
I usually give Will a hard time on this category, so... Okay, come at it.
Tom just gave you a hard time.
Okay, the next item is the use of school facilities by outside organizations or waiver requests, as I'm told. Really, there's nothing new or different that hasn't been approved that's been on here, so, any questions?
And Commissioner Sweeney has got a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Doreen. You can beat Will when you see him. But unfortunately, there is a line on the form that says, "Person's name, address, phone number that's responsible for the supervision," and on several of these, it is not filled in or partially fill in. So, Hoops for Life at Crosby, Waterbury Knights at Willby, Waterbury Knights at Kingsbury, and Waterbury Ballers at Crosby, just no phone number. So, and I know several of these have multiple applications for multiple schools in, but the reality is, is that that information is there for a reason. In case there's any issues, we know who to call, and it's, and most of these, it's completely blank.
Okay.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Just to add on to that, similar to Commissioner Sweeney's note, right below that on the form, there's a place for the applicant to initial where they agree that should we ever have to go after them for any kind of damages, that they are paying all the attorney's fees, and it's about 50/50 that that ever gets initialed. So, it's housekeeping, similar to Commissioner Sweeney's problem, but, you know, there's nothing wrong with filling out a form, especially if we're going to waive a whole lot of money for you to use the facility.
Okay, I'll let everyone know.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. We'll tell Will you did a spectacular job. Next item, superintendent's update to the board, which is in black and white for us all to read and peruse. You don't have anything you want to add, right? Are we having an executive session tonight? We are? Okay.
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're off to executive session, ladies.